So today, we're going to go through a quick presentation about what is all this about? This internship and the role of the Immigrant Council of Ireland in raising awareness about migrant voting rights. And we'll have the presentation of councillor O'Leary about the Dunleavy Rathdown County Council functions, how to register to vote as a migrant person or as a person living in Ireland, and what are the functions of the Dunleavy Rathdown Social Inclusion Unit. At the end, we'll have 20 minutes Q and A for comments, questions that you may have. Please don't be shy. We want to make it as more interactive as possible. So first of all, we would like to remind you or to have a discussion of why, what are the main components of democracy, which are basically participation and representation. And according to the last census in Ireland, 2016, one out of eight people in Ireland are of a migrant background, which is 12% of the Irish society. And 12% is about 800,000 people out of 4.6 million, and that's a lot of people. So we're wondering, we'd like to ask you, how many of those people are, do you think, are registered to vote? And you can just write it in the chat, how many percentage? Or you can shout it out loud. Just give it, give us a guess. Let me see the chat. 5% said Shanshank, not enough, said Jim O'Leary. With 60%, says Elizabeth. Okay, so not enough is not a percentage, so, but you're right. Basically, let me see if my slides help me to tell you the truth. Only up to 30% of those migrants living in Ireland are registered to vote. And that's a very optimistic figure. We have a guess that is actually way less than that, it's between 6 to 30%, but it's not very accurate because it's actually very little people. And we're hoping that actually after the 25th of November, more people manage, or before the 25th of November, more migrant people register to vote. And that's very little, and that's the reason why we're doing this, because we want to raise awareness of this issue. And in fact, if you're an Irish citizen, or if you hold an Irish passport, you can vote in every election in Ireland. That's as for the European elections, referendums, the general elections or the DOL, and the local elections. If you're a British citizen, you can vote at the local elections and at the general elections for the DOL. These are for the members of the parliament. And if you're a European citizen, you can vote at the local elections and also at the European Parliament to elect the MEPs or Member of the European Parliament. And if you're a non-European, you can vote at the local elections to elect local councillors. And that's a piece of information that most of people, they are most of migrants, they don't know. And that's the reason, or we reckon that that's the reason why a lot of people do not participate in elections. But as I was saying, democracy is not only about participation, but it's also about representation. And out of the 949 local councillors in the whole country, only 12 are from a migrant background. And again, that's very little because it doesn't represent or it doesn't mirror the composition of society. We should have at least 100 local councillors if we mirror with the percentage of the migrant people living in the country. And those 12 migrant councillors are here in front of you. We have councillor J K O'Guimeres. He was recently appointed in Fingal County Council. He was co-opted because his predecessor died unfortunately in June. So when a councillor died or resigned, you are, sorry, another person is co-opted or basically elected by the same party. And that was the case of J K O'Guimeres. We have councillor Hazel Chu. She's Irish, but with Chinese parents. So that's why we are talking about candidates or councillors with a migrant background. And she was the Lord Mayor of Dublin from 2020 to 2021. We have councillor Uremu at the chimney, and she's from Nigeria. And she's the first black female mayor of Longford County Council. We have councillor Abdul Kalam Azak Talukdar. He is from Bangladesh. And he was again the first Muslim councillor in Limerick County Council. We have councillor Cassie Achmer. He is from Bangladesh and he's Dunleavy Rathdown County Council. We have councillor Jamie Adenuga. She is again the first black female councillor elected in County Meath. We have councillor Baby Peripadam. He's from India. And he is in South Dublin County Council. We have councillor Elena Secas. She's in Limerick City County Council, and she's from Mordoba. We have councillor Medellin Johansson. She's from Sweden, and she's in Dublin City Council. Councillor, sorry, Unam Ranek. She's from India. She's in Fingal County Council. Councillor Sophie Nicola. She's from France, and she is in Dublin City Council. And councillor Sasha Novak. She's in Limerick City and County Council, and she's from Slovakia. So these are the 12 brave migrant current councillors that we have in the country out of the 949 that I was saying. And part of the reason why we have such a short number of migrant councillors were addressed in a report issued by the Immigrant Council of Ireland in 2019, where the 56 migrant candidates were interviewed after the elections. And they reported that the reasons why they think very few people or migrant people seek elections is because of migrants in general have low level of knowledge about voting rights. And migrants themselves, that they have very little knowledge of politics in Ireland. They obviously have a smaller social network and political network than their Irish counterparts. They have lack of access to funding, especially those ones who are running independently. And they also suffer racial discrimination in some of the instances. So, and that's why this program is running on, and that's what we're doing here tonight. Basically, the Immigrant Council of Ireland, they have two programs. One is the migrant councillor internship scheme, where they pair a migrant person, in this case, like me, with a local councillor to promote diversity, to educate ourselves about Irish politics, to increase political participation from migrants through this kind of interactions, and also to increase connections between migrants and local councillors, as we're doing here tonight. And the other program the Immigrant Council of Ireland has is the migrant electoral empowerment program, which is a 12-weeks program, again, to train migrants on how to run for elections, basically doing some technical tools on how to do canvassing, research, and train them, train them about Irish politics. So if you have any questions about these programs, or when are they running through the year? They are mainly in summer, but please keep an eye on the Immigrant Council of Ireland website for the next round of applications. And I really strongly encourage you to apply because this is a very enriching experience for me. And I will say we can hear from councillor O'Leary what he thinks about it. And that's all from me. Now I'm going to make councillor O'Leary host.
Let's see if I can do it.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I have to stop my screen. Yeah.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Excellent. Firstly, I want to thank Lily and the Immigrant Council for giving me this opportunity to speak with everybody. And I think this is hugely important for everyone. You know, voting is a key part of being part of any community. So I think it builds connections and it builds networks for people. So I think it's hugely important. Now, what I hope to do is just give you, maybe everybody knows already, just give you a very light touch idea of what we do on the council, then something on how to register to vote, and then just a little bit about our own social inclusion unit in DLR. So I'm a county councillor in Dunleary Rathdown. I'm not 100% sure how many councils we have in Ireland. I think it might be 32. So in Dublin, though, there are four. And geographically, we're the smallest, we're below Dublin City, South Dublin is to the west, and Fingal is to the north. And within Dunleary Rathdown, then we have six wards, and you can see them there. I represent the Dondrum Ward. Let's see if I can put them on the pointer. So I represent Dondrum. And there was a reform there of local authorities back about 10 years ago. And I think we actually cut in half the number of councillors we had in the country. But city areas got extra councillors because they had been discriminated from a population perspective. So Dunleary Council went from 28 councillors to 40. So we actually have quite a number of councillors now. The local elections occur every five years. So there's a fixed date. It's always May or June every five years. So the next election is 2024. They happen on the same day as the European elections. And so my presentation, I suppose, the emphasis here is about participation at a local level, at the local elections. So what does local government, what are the services we provide? And they're quite, I suppose, they impact people immediately. So the first thing is we're responsible for the local roads, you know, whether it's retirement adding roads, putting in new roads, even the councils would have a big role to play in the management of some of the national NCDM 50, but also then in terms of maintaining our streets and footpath. At the moment, say, we have the issue of leaves, so trying to get the leaves off the footpath, off the bike path.
Sorry, Jim, just a second. Mary O'Yardirann, do you mind muting yourself? I think you can mute her as a host. Okay, thank you.
And then just gullies as well. So it's about making sure that when we have the heavy rains, that the water runs into the, correctly into the, into the, into the source and doesn't collect and flood homes. So that's an immediate thing that you, so you should see people out cleaning the streets as we speak. Another very important role is the provision of social housing. And again, that's a huge issue in the country at the moment. But so we have a responsibility actually to build council houses. We have a responsibility to make sure that up to between 10 and 20% of new developments, that there are council houses in it. We manage those, we collect the rents. We also work with the approved housing bodies as well. And when it comes to the building of council houses, it's the actual county councillors give the planning permission. So we actually have to vote in favor of certain, of new council areas. And one of the biggest roles we have is making plans about how land in the local authority area can be used and developed. So it's a little bit like every, I think it's six years, we have to determine the basis of land use in our council. So what areas are we allowed to build houses? What areas do we have to keep as parks? What areas can you run a business in? And even different levels of granularity in terms of when we talk about what type of businesses. So is it factories? Is it warehouses? So, and that's a, that's a really, because that, that really speaks to how we plan for population growth, which is a key part of what we look at in terms of, so we'll be given information about population projections. We have to ensure that enough land is zoned so that enough houses can be built. And we talked then about the environment and water. So the council have to work with Irish water to ensure, I mean, one of the things in Ireland we used to always be very, very proud of is that you could drink the water from the taps. And that's still the standard that we aim for. And so when I was growing up, I remember when we first started buying bottled water, we used to laugh at the idea, who would buy bottled water? Now, I know we all do it now, but again, it was something that we thought was uniquely Irish. We were very fortunate. We could drink the water from our taps. But in other areas then around the environment, it's about, you know, providing people with sufficient parkland. And one of the things in our county, I think we're the first county in Ireland where we have been recognized as a tree city. So we have enough trees in this council area and enough plants to keep planting trees such that we're regarded to have sufficient trees to be regarded as a tree city. And that's a UN designation, as I understand this. Then simple things like supporting the community in the arts and sports facilities. So the council has its own leisure company, and the leisure company is responsible at its simplest for running, I use the broad term, sports centers. But critically, these are our swimming pools. And then in terms of supporting people who are in the art. So we would have musicians, poets, novelists, who are, who get a one-year residency. So they're funded for a year by the council, which allows them to just concentrate on the particular art. But also then we provide a lot of community grants to different groups that are involved in different initiatives across the county. And then very lastly, then we run the register of electors. So you have to go to the county council to get onto the register. And the other thing then, just, you know, okay, we provide all these services, but we do actually raise taxes as well. So people have to be conscious of that. So if you have a business, councillors will determine the commercial rates you pay. If you own your own home, or some people who are renting, they're responsible for paying the local property tax. At what level? It's set at a government level, but councillors can vary that by 15%. So we can increase it by 15% or we can reduce it by 15%, and we do that every year. If you're building homes, or if you're building factories in this council, we determine how much contribution you have to make to the council to allow them to build apartments and housing. So every time a house is built in the county, somewhere between 5,000 and 10,000 has to be paid to the council by the developer. So that, you know, when people buy their houses, that's part of the cost. And then we determine things, councillors determine things like the parking charges and recycling fee. So if you bring your stuff up to Valley Owen Recycling, it is ultimately councillors have decided that you have to pay, whether it's a fiver to bring your brown waste in or your car boot or whatever. And then let it find, again, we determine stuff like that. But still, I'd say over half of the money that we get as a councillor comes directly from the government in terms of funding and grants. So one of the things the council might be responsible for would be the rollout of, you know, the building of a new road, the management of a new road. But all that money will come from the government. Or if we have decided that we're building, whether it's a four-house scheme or a 40-house scheme for council houses, the money for that will actually come from the government. It might be managed by the council, but it comes from the government. And then I suppose the role of county councillors. And I think what's really critical here is that the authority on the county council is split between county officials and county councillors. And really, what we need to do is work together to get the best for the people that we represent. And the, so the idea is that the officials are here to support us with information, but for a lot of, for a lot of issues, they have the authority. They are the ones that can make the decisions. And there are only certain specific areas where councillors can make the decisions. So a lot of the time, people will ask me, look, I need to get a tree cut down, for example. So all I can do is ask an official, would you mind maybe cutting the tree down? But they don't have to. They've decided that that tree is a special tree, or there's something important about that tree, or it goes against the policy of the council to cut down trees, then they will not cut down the tree, and there's nothing I can do about it. I can make representations. And that kind of comes to one of the key things that we do as councils. We, we, we're a democratic representative of the local community. So what we do is we reflect the views of people living in the council. And an idea, at the moment, say, one of the big issues is the introduction of cycling lanes. And the council officials, they will get the money from the government, say, to introduce cycle lanes. And they have the authority through the different legislation to introduce the cycle lanes. They don't have to involve the councillors. They don't need our approval, if you like. But they'll want to talk to us about it. So there'll be all sorts of levels of public consultation. And part of that consultation is talking to the councillors, because we feel like we understand the temperature. And, you know, at the end of the day, people have elected us to represent their views. If you ask people, what do they think of cycling? Those that are very much involved in cycling would say, yes, this is a great idea. Those people who are not paying the slightest bit of attention won't think anything at all and won't participate. So you always need to fall back on the councillors, having an idea of what the temperature of the area is. So at the moment, one of the proposals is that we would have to make one of the key roads, say, in Deans Grange, make that one way. And while the officials will decide ultimately what will be done, they know it's wise to talk to us. So we have some element of maybe trying to influence them in terms of the outcome. And the way we'll want to influence them will reflect the pressure that we're being put under by ordinary constituents. But in some things, we do have authorities. In some things, the council officials have to come to us, and they have to get us to vote for them and approve them. And one of the key things is the county development plan. So that's something we've been working on. It's, as I said, it happens every five to six years, and it's a two-year process. So we would have completed two weeks of late-night meetings there, only about two weeks ago. And in that plan, as I said before, we decide where you can build houses, where you can build factories, where you have to retain parks. But we also make up some of the rules. So we could put in a rule there that if you're going to build high-density apartments to a residential area, you have to make sure that there's 22 meters separation distance. You have to take into account that it's a residential area, so it can't be too high or too bulky or whatever. So we have a role there. A lot of these rules are set at the government level, but a lot of these rules are set at a council level. So that's what we have, if you like, a policy responsibility. In addition, we will decide, you know, again, in conjunction with people, speaking with people from the Department of Education and our own planners, this is where we need a school, or this is where we need new playgrounds. And all of these things, if you like, form part of our county development plan. I made the point as well, ultimately, we grant permissions for council houses. So the council officials, the planners might decide, we have a perfect site here to build 40 houses. They will need to set out their designs to the councillors, and we need to vote to approve it. Money will come from the government. And again, that allows everybody to participate and the views of the community to be reflected in the outcome. We set the service charges, and then we have a role in terms of provision of the amenities. Do we need more swimming pools? Do we need more playgrounds? Stuff like that. But again, with all of these things, comes back to budgets. And the biggest influence we have as councillors is we have a role in determining the budget. Now, unfortunately, most of the figures are provided by the officials. Being a councillor is a part-time role. I'm not sure as councillors, we do a very good job in terms of monitoring and oversight on the budget, and it's a very powerful tool that we have. But ultimately, the council I'm on, we spend about 210 million every year, which is an awful lot of money. We decide how much goes to the housing department, how much goes to the community department. Now, again, the officials will have said to us, look, we think a fair number for the community area is this, a housing is this, a transport is this. And it's very unlikely that we will disagree with them, because they are, if you like, the experts and the professionals. But if we do want to influence things, we have the ability to demand that money that's going into housing goes into parks, if we so wish. And I suppose then the question has to be asked, why should you vote? And I think, you know, Lily touched on it. When I was going around canvassing, it's interesting how many people don't realize they have a vote. And if you're over 18 and you've been resident in this country for over six months, you have a right to vote in a local election. And again, what's unusual is the amount of Europeans, so members of the citizens of the EU, who don't bother to register to vote, because even though it happens on the same day as the European elections, very many of them have the right to vote if they're French, in French constituencies for the European elections. So they don't think then to, you know, and there wouldn't then be a lot of voting for Irish candidates in European elections, so they don't think to register to vote in local elections. And from my own perspective, you know, the ability to vote is hugely important in terms of participation in your community. It's how you decide. It's how people have an ability to influence the type of people that represents them. So we live in a representative democracy. Once you vote, you've kind of given up your rights. If you like, you've now handed it on to me, and you're expecting me to work on your behalf. If you don't, if you don't vote, you've had no say in the type of people that will represent you. And you will be represented if you follow me. Decisions will be made that impact everybody living in the community. But if you don't vote, if you don't register to vote, you have no influence on the type of person that ends up representing you. Or you've had no influence on electing somebody who has the same priorities as you do. And I suppose that's the very last point. If you don't vote, other people choose. He's elected to represent your community. So you're losing out. And, okay, Lily pointed out there, we all need to be on the register by the 25th of this month. So the question is, well, how do I find out if I'm on the register? For starters, you know, you may have moved counties, you may have changed address within the county. So the easiest way, you can actually ring the council. You can email them, and the email is there. Or you can check online at checktherregister.ie or www.voter.ie. Or you can go to the county council offices or to a data station and say, look, I want to look at the register and see if your name is on it. So it's, there's lots of ways to see if you're on the register. Unfortunately, we've less than 10 days to get it done. Now, the next question, how do you register? And again, it's actually very, very straightforward. You need to fill out a form. It's as simple as that, fill out a single form, and there's a link to it up there. And I can share these slides with anybody. You link to that. If you live in Dublin, you can actually register online. You don't need to fill out a paper form if you have a MyDob account. So again, that's helpful, I suppose. And you can see this over here is a copy of the form. And literally, you just need to put down your name, your date of birth, what your citizenship is, and sign it, and say, and give a contact address. And you send that to the local authority. If you live in Dublin, you don't even have to put a stamp on it. So it's relatively straightforward to register to vote. I would say, I mean, if you think of the qualifications maybe that you need if you're in America to register for some of their elections, here, it's straightforward. So the message, I think, from anyone who participates in politics, whatever our views are, you know, ironically enough, even when it doesn't suit us, we want as many people to register. We want as much participation as possible. There's also a thing called the supplementary register. So again, if for whatever reason people miss the date of the 25th, once the register is published in February, you can then add your name to what's called the supplementary register. And again, it's a different form, but it's very similar. And what, and so the idea being, we update the register every year. But even when we publish it, we allow people to be added to it in advance of an election. Maybe two to three weeks prior to an election, people can still be added to the register. And there's a very useful website here, that kind of outlines, I suppose, how to register, where to register. Again, it's a link there, and people can get to that. And how to vote. What's unusual about Ireland is, I think, we're, there's only two countries in the world use the system that we use, called a single transferable vote. And again, I have a link to a site here. There's a whole booklet on voting in Ireland and the different, you know, the different qualifications you need, or how to vote, where to vote, stuff like that. But there's, just, I'll give you a little flavor, because one of the things about voting in Ireland is a little bit of, there's a bit of fun. Irish people like voting. And you can see the way we throw around a whole amount of leaflets, and we have a whole lot of posters. It's almost festival. People say that they don't like it. But an awful lot of people, Irish people, like it, because you know there's an election happening. And even the way we commentate on it, even though the votes have been cast the day before when we're commentating on it, it's like we're commentating on a race. Things are still live. Things could change in the next two or three minutes without recognizing, well, no, everything has been said the day before. After people vote, the answer is already in the box. But we have a special system called single transferable vote. And the whole idea is that it's a proportional representation system, which means that for whatever reason, 40% of the population wanted to, or sorry, let's say, a low number. Let's say 20% of the population wanted to vote for, let's call them the Liberal Party. And roughly, they will get then roughly they will get twenty percent of the 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 seats, whether it's at a local level, whether it's at a national level or European level. That contrasts with the UK, where the Liberal, the Social Democrats can get nearly twenty percent of the vote and they might only get four percent of the seats, you know. So in that sense, we have a powerful system here in that when you do register the vote, when you do make an effort and 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 in participating, the type of person that you decide that you want, ultimately, if there's enough people, will get elected. So the way it works is that you end up voting for, you can vote for every single candidate, but you have to order the order them in your preference. So if for whatever reason, um let's say, Kazzy Ahmed, who's on the council with me, if you thought he was the best candidate, you give him a one. If for whatever reason you thought I was the second best candidate, you give me a two. With a bit of luck, Kazzy gets a number, enough number ones, and he's elected automatically. But if he doesn't get enough and he's eliminated, then all his votes will go to me and maybe your second preference will get elected. So that way, your vote always gets somebody elected. Very few people vote in Ireland and a person that they would be in favour of doesn't get elected. It rarely happens. And so and the other thing then, just in terms of the mechanics of voting, you know, normally you get a a a polling card that tells you where you vote. Uh our polling stations are open generally from seven till nine. They're usually in schools. And they're local, so I think we might have fo- forty polling stations in 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 Donegal right now. So it it's not difficult to get to a polling station. And what you'll find is that, and I I I haven't had a slide on this, but when we talk about participation, and if you look at the the councillors that Lily put up there, I know four of them, so four of them are in my party. And the reason they're successful, and I can talk, say, Kazzy, because Kazzy I know well, they joined a political party. They didn't know anybody in the political party. They joined us. And they attended meetings, and then they looked to get elected to positions. And what I can say to you is that every party is crying out for members. So the the way to build your network is to join a political party, and there are enough political parties in Ireland to reflect most people's views. And now, I'm not sure, I can't remember how I got onto that particular track I got down it, but political party system here, there's enough parties. I I I I I emphasize to people, that's how, that's how you build your network. That's how you get access to the system. It can be done as as independent, but that's a little harder, particularly if you're if 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 you're new to the community. So I look at those four councillors that Lily put up there in my party, they all got involved by joining our party. Uh and I'm not saying that has to be our party, it can be any party. But what you will find is most, I would say all political parties in Ireland are very open to the idea of participants from every background, uh every country, every culture. And let's see what I, I then just want to say a couple of things on on, like one of the units we have in DLR is the social inclusion unit. And that speaks, you know, it's there to, it is two two functions, words to make sure that the council in terms of our policies and in terms of the way we interact with people, is conscious of its responsibilities. And to embed a social inclusive ethos into what we do. So that's the first thing. The other thing then is to reach out to all these different groupings and bring them in to the tent, as it were. But it and and but the the remit is very, very broad. So the people they speak to could be members of the travelling community, uh LGBTQ community. It's not simply the migrant community. It's it's all of those, if you like, and sectors that may be marginalised. And it's 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 to help them to integrate and become part of the mainstream, if you like. And to that event then, to that to that end, they will, they will interact with different uh groups. So I don't know, Lily, you're involved with the Venezuelan Community Group. I don't know how many Venezuelans there are in in Donegal right now, but you could interact with the social inclusion unit, and they will explain to you uh uh facilities or the supports that are there to help your group. So the idea is that to offer the support to you, an awful lot of the lifting has to be done by the individual groups themselves. But the ideas the council is there to try and uh support either through funding or just through ideas. And then the very last thing, just to give you an idea, uh I just want to show you our website. So uh bear with me now and see if I, so hang on there a second. Uh bear with me. So in DLR, again, just to give you an idea of the, you know, I I won't have fully captured the different services that, but um you can see that there. So this is, this is our website, if you like. Gives you the big heading, planning, housing, parks and the outdoors. But to give you an idea of the type of things you can apply for, if you click on that link, you can come down here and say you've got the community grants. And it'll give you a whole lot of information on what the grants are for, who to contact within the council. Um
I don't think we're look, seeing your screen now. Maybe you have to go to a different.
Oh, you're not seeing it now?
No, we just, we just see the presentation. So you're showing the website, right?
I am. Hang on there a second. I'll go stop sharing. No, uh bear with me again.
Someone's still on the bus. Mary?
Okay, so you can see that there now. I'll go back out to the, I'll go back out to the to the front screen. So this is the screen of Donegal right now. And at a high level, it shows the different areas. But one of the things I wanted to just show you is that, you know, the different services that are available. So if you click on apply for it, it brings you to all of these different, you know, so if you need to apply for housing, um grants, different things that might be going on in the heritage sector, but also then on markets, if you wanted to run a market stall, stuff like that. And when you click onto it, it gives you a few, a a huge amount of information, who you need to contact within the council and the purposes of 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 the grants or or whatever. But there's also what I think is is something that they put up in the last file. If you click the, click the accessibility button, one of the things they have here is that it will convert the whole website into a language maybe that people are more familiar with. So again, not having a perfect command of the English language shouldn't be a uh an inhibitor for trying to interact with the council website to see what is there that might be useful for different communities, not just migrant communities, every community. And so that's basically, that's basically all I have to say. I'm more than happy to take some questions if people want.
That is brilliant. Thank you very much, councillor Lurie. I will ask, um maybe, so I'm going to read some of the questions and comments people put on the on the chat. And Teresa asked earlier, uh from the councillor presentation, it is clear that the release of duties of a councillor is very important, but also very long. Um Mary, would you mute yourself? And and if you have any comments, Mary, oh, you're there. Thank you, sorry. And so it is very important, but also very long. What is the weekly time commitment of a councillor to do their work?
And it's it's difficult to know. So um I'm very lucky, I don't work anymore, so I can give an awful lot, lot of time to the council. But when I did work, so I was a councillor maybe fifteen years ago, when I did work, it was very hard to balance it. And I saw there that in Cork County Council, I think they might have, I'm go- I'm guessing now, they might have forty councillors, but in two years, five of the newer councillors have already resigned because of work commitments. In our own council, uh three to four people have resigned because of work commitments. So the 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 and and ironically enough, part of the problem is for a councillor, we have some very important roles, which would be understanding the budget or participating in the county development plan. Yet a huge amount of our time would be spent answering calls for people who want the free cut down, or they want um someone to fix the swing in the park. So instead of contacting the council directly, they contact the councillor, and of course, we then have to contact the council. So I I it's a very hard one. How long is a piece of string is how I would answer that question. It depends on what commitment you're in a position to give us. And and you know, you have to prioritise what is important at any moment in time. And but I I personally would be of a view, I'd have fewer councillors again. I'd have directly elected mayors, I'd pay councillors three times maybe what we get paid at the moment. And um make it a proper job. So I'd have half or maybe one-third the number of councillors, but make it full-time. And but I want, because one of the strengths in Irish politics is that uh our politicians are very close to the people. So it's very easy to know your politician, whether it's even a minister. A minister will, people will talk to ministers out on the on the footpath. That doesn't happen in every country where there's protection units and special services. There's this huge gap. So I would be very conscious of the fact that we still need sufficient amount of councillors, but I don't think that I don't think councillors have the opportunity to do the role justice. So I I that hasn't answered your question. I'll give you, I'll give you at least in the olden days, you could spend every night two to three hours after coming home from work, working on council work and most of your Saturday. So that's a lot of time after you've done a job.
Now, Teresa had another comment. According to the Immigrant Council research, um the report that I showed in my presentation, um uh research, party membership significantly increased candidates' chances to be elected. And according to the fifty-six candidates who were researched or interviewed, independent candidates have less chances to be elected. Uh we also have a comment from Mary White, which is part of the Social Inclusion Unit, and she's with us tonight. The the Social Inclusion Unit is happy to support all migrant groups based in the country through community grants, the festivals of inclusion events, integration forum and general support. And thank you, Mary, for that. Uh maybe, maybe if you want to leave us your contact details uh for those groups that are here, I would like to have direct contact with you would be great. Thank you. And Bruno says, then the system is biased by construction, and this is on regards to the to the candidates' independence. Shouldn't the constitution guarantee a method to give equal opportunities of access to anybody? If not, with due respect of this webinar, to to show the idea that any target councillor should enter a party. And if they, if they are available parties that's not represented target political and service ideas, should the target build in its own party? And that's interesting.
Okay, that's a, that's a complicated one, right? But I would, you know, there's nothing to stop you running as an independent. And nothing at all to stop you going. It's very easy to run as an independent. And the threshold to get the number of, I I can't remember off the top of my head, you might need I don't know, twenty signatures to to allow you to run as a as an independent. And you will find that an awful lot of people on the councils are independents. So if we've got forty councillors, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, at the top of my head, five of them are independents, right? I don't decide who gets elected as councillor. The Irish people do, and the people who vote do. So I'm just speaking to the statistical reality. So for whatever reason, people, when they come and they assess a candidate, one of the things they'll do is they'll, so I know for a fact people will vote for me simply because I'm in my party. And they kind of go, well, he represents my views. And they have, if you like, they're kind of going, well, he's not mad, because he will have gone through a process to be selected. I don't know anything about this independent person. And sometimes some independents are a little bit off the wall and they don't do that particular brand any good. So there's nothing to, so there's no impediment to people run, somebody running as a as a as a as a as an independent. And again, I would say there's nothing to stop new political parties being set up. So ironically, so it's very easy to set up a political party in Ireland, you know. At the end of this meeting, everybody who was attended here could set up a party, if they so wished. Uh it's that easy. And so the point I would make though about participating in a party is that it builds up a a background for you. It gives you more, um you get to know more people. You get to know more people who have an interest in politics. And there is a party for everybody, even on this chat. Yeah, there's more parties in Ireland than there are people participating in tonight, let us say. So it gives you an opportunity to meet people already in the community who have the same interests as you from a party political perspective. You will, you know, if you're a member of a party, so you know, Lily, you talked about, you know, the migrant council will 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 do courses on 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 how to get elected and stuff. And you'll do that, you'll do one hour session on how to canvass. But if you've gone out with a political party and you've canvassed for a whole election, that's far more than you'll ever learn from uh what people will tell you in a classroom. You will learn how the system works. Uh you you know, the I, the intricacies of the Irish political system. So the first thing you learn is you always ask an Irish person for the vote. And ironically, it is, if they say they'll vote for you, ironically enough, they probably, they probably will. If you ask them for the number one vote, they will feel committed to you. You learn these little things. Part participation in a party, any party, doesn't have to be my party, any party. But more importantly, you you you've you've, you're participating in the community as it now exists. So so you have, you have all these structures in place, participate in them, you know, utilise them to your own end. Join a political party that's close to your own views and then try and persuade the people there that the things you want to be changed need to be changed from the inside. And that that's all I would say on that on that particular one. And you know, it's very important, if if you have an interest in politics, why stay alone? You know, why, 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 why roll your own canoe? Participate in bigger groupings. It's, and if you don't like it, I know plenty of people who've been in two or three parties in Ireland. And they will be senior people as well. So these are people who are elected to the gall and they jump from one party to another. So it's very easy at a local level. You don't like the party you're in, go to another one.
Now, I have to, I'll take another question from Elizabeth, and then I'm going to Shanshak, who is raising his hand. And Elizabeth says, I'd I'd also be interested to know what what an average day or week looks like for a councillor. What kinds of things have to be done? And are they to do, are are they to a rotor or on the spot firefighting?
It's uh so, so I will get lots of emails of individual queries, so people looking for housing, people queries about drains, and the idea is that you have to uh follow up on those particular queries with the council officials. The work is done by the officials. All we do is make representations. But then I have to prepare for meetings. So we have three meetings every month, a council meeting for three hours and then two area committees for two hours. Uh we have strategic policy committees, so you have to prepare for that. I have an audit committee on Thursday, so I'm on the audit committee of the council. So that will be a three or four hour meeting and we will have to review four or five different audit reports. And so, and in addition to that then, say, in the next two weeks, we will be doing the budget. So again, de- depending on how much time you can give it, and I can give it more time than a lot of people. So it gives me the opportunity to look at the budget, review the budget, see is there anything in it I don't like, or is there particular points I want to make. There's no set, there's no set day, if you like. What you have to be cognisant of though is you have a council meeting every month, you have two area committee meetings, you have to get your questions in for those, you have to get your motions in. So that's the, that's the minimum. And as you get emails, you have to try and respond to them and send them off to different people. And and then there are the different things. That's, then the other part of politics is you have to let people know you exist. So if you're doing stuff for people, you have to put out a leaflet and let them know. You know, that's, that's the other point. Part of this, part of this is um about trying to market yourself as well. So that's part of it. And you're not helping anyone directly except yourself. One of the sayings we have is that uh politics is show business for ugly people. That's a joke.
Can we take Shanshak's question now, please?
Good evening all. First of all, thank you, Immigrant Council of Ireland for this event, wonderful event. And thank you very much, Jim, for the best presentation I've seen today, because I've already been kicked out of one event this morning for speaking the truth. So I hope not to get kicked out again. And and bringing me to your slide on why to vote, and you mentioned something about participation. I think that's very, very important, and that's what Lilian said earlier as well, pres- participation and representation, which are the two pillars of democracy. In our community, we're trying to currently promote participation. And we are dealing with an organisation that clearly states that we are not going to host elections, we're not going to give out membership. It is supported by South Dublin County Council. I will not go into that particular sector in this uh uh Zoom call, because that is something I'd like to talk to you about in the future. But there are certain places where if we can't participate in our own community democratically, how can our rights be respected on a national level or a local level? You know, that is all the biggest thing that we're trying to face. Second, and when a migrant wants to run through a You know, that is all the biggest thing that we're trying to face. Second, and when a migrant wants to run through a party, they have to go through a selection convention. Now, selection convention, I personally believe it's a bit rigged because a lot of people tend to. Uh you know, get their own friends or family to join the party, keep them in there for two years and they have the right to vote. I haven't added anyone, but I've served the party, you know, with with almost honesty and integrity. But I know for sure that I will not be getting the opportunity, but that kind of is a bit unfair towards migrant councillors. So that's, that's it.
Okay, I'm gonna be controversial and I don't want to offend anybody, right? I suppose I'm the type of politician who's a little bit concerned about. One of the things about Irish politics is, really the big parties, I would say Finfa, Finnegal and Sinn Féin. They have this concept of becoming good, right? So we're doing everything that's right for society in a general sense. I'm, I'm a little bit, I don't like breaking people down into, like, when I'm looking at all of you guys now. I'm not seeing, you know, representatives from loads of different micro communities. I just see people who are interested in politics and want to participate. Right? And I think that's, we need, so what I would say to you.
Shashank.
Shashank, right? What I would say to you is, the difficulty you find yourself in is the exact same difficulty. That people who are not from the migrant community, who have been in politics all their life, also face. So I look at my career in politics. I had to step aside at a, I could have been in the dog ten years ago, but I had to step aside for somebody because I knew. The powers that be wanted somebody different. That had nothing to do with, that just had to do with the fact they want someone. That they felt was, it was a high profile name and uh it was, it was a good thing for the party, right? I look at my friend Kazzy Ahmed, right? So I know Kazzy because we were in the exact same branch. And and I can't speak for the party you're in, but I do know for a fact that my party needs candidates. That's the first thing. At a local election, people need candidates. You are Finnegan. So I would, well, I'll talk to you separately. And because I know we need candidates, we're always crying out for candidates from from everywhere. Now, the irony of it all is, whether you like it or not. So at my first convention, I only got selected because I made sure that I had people from work and people from my family. That I put on the register. You have to do that. That's the, if you like, that's the game, right? And this idea. Yeah, it's, so I I'm more than happy to speak with you, but I would think that. If you like, there's maybe unwritten rules in there, like Mary Lou McDonald, for example, right? Her background is, she was in Finfa. She was very competent, she was very committed. And uh I don't know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, a co-option became available. And she felt she should have been next up. But the the sitting TDs decided they didn't want her because she could be too good. They wanted to put somebody else in there that would protect them. So she lost out. So she went to a different party. So that's, that is the story of Irish politics. The same thing happened with. So you have the two Healy Rays down in Kerry. Their father was a Finfa member. Uh a Finfa councillor, I think as well. And he wanted to run for the dog and they wouldn't let him. So he ran as an independent, he got elected. Now he's got two sons, TDs, and I don't know how many of his grandchildren are councillors. So that's the way the system works in Ireland. That I would say to you, that's like, politics is about, you know. When you get so high, you kind of drop the drawbridge as well to protect yourself. That's, you know. And I'm sounding cynical now, but there's a reality that as well, because most people who are politicians are thinking, okay. I need to be in this position to get what I need to get done. And the best way of me getting what I need to get done is make sure that no one can ever. If you like, take me out. So I protect myself. So I I I would still say to everybody, get involved in a political party. It's not easy, but I, you know. I I. I'm impressed by how open Irish people are. I, you know, let let's call a spade a spade. I'm an old white middle class man, like, so I'm. I'm, I'm, you know, a bit of a dinosaur. And I, you know, and 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 I look at someone like Kazzy Ahmed. And, you know, he he, he got a certain level of support within the party, but he had to work very hard himself. So he, when he was selected, there was another woman that was selected as well. Both of them didn't get a whole lot of support. Whatever support they got, they had to generate for themselves. So Irish politics is a bit, you know, the parties will tell you, look, we'll look after you and everything. But the way it works is that it's internal competition and you have to get people out for yourself. And people won't.
Now, councillor, we have only one minute left and I wanted to go through quickly one question. If you can respond these two questions in a minute. Uh can you take policy as a career or can you make it a le, can you make a living out of it? That's one. And the other one was from Nicolet, Nicoletta. If you are already involved in politics in your own country, can you get involved in Irish politics?
Uh I would say anyone who's living in Ireland should be involved in Irish politics if their commitment is in Ireland. But even if they're only here, if they're here on a, how would I put it, if they're here on on a contract for maybe four years. Then it's worth investing because again, at the end of the day, you will get an opportunity to experience. A type of politics that may be not the same as your own country and you meet people. That's the first thing. And the other one, can you make a career out of it? I would say, yes, it depends what age you're at. Uh can you make?
Can you take a policy eh as a career? Like, do you have? I suppose politics, is that what you meant?
Yeah, you can, you.
Yes, yes, politics.
Yeah, you can. You can make politics your career. It's much easier when you're starting off, but for the hundred people that start off. Maybe only two or three will be successful. That's real, you know, it's like every career, you know, it gets layered out. So you might be successful within your branch. You make political connections as well, which help you maybe in other aspects. You don't have to be, so you don't have to be an elected official. You could work in the party itself. Or you could, you know, you 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 could help a party out as a as a as a as a volunteer, if you like. But the party then has helped you maybe in in other aspects of your career, particularly if if it involves. And helping with policy developments. So if you're in an area that's involved in policy developments, they'll want to, parties will want to interact with you both. So that they get insights as to how things should change, but also then to influence what you're saying as the next step, say, a country should take. Ironically enough, in Ireland, the civil service are very, very important. And there isn't, mainly it's a function of the fact that it's been Finnegal and Finfa and Parfumos, the the foundation of the state. There isn't huge swings in policy in Ireland, you know, it it evolves. You don't have politics in Ireland like you have in the UK where. One minute, everything's been nationalised and then everything's been privatised. We have a more consistent approach. So I'll leave it at that. I think that's a minute.
Yes, and we're two minutes past eight. Thank you very much for your time, your precious time. Thank you so much, councillor O'Leary, for your time. Giving us this amazing presentation. And to all of you, we are going to share this, the slides with you and I'll share the contact. Of again, Mary White, thank you for being here, and councillor Jim O'Leary. All the best, have a good night.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.